At this time, we will call this meeting to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee DeBoer.
Here.
Trutschel.
Here.
Pfeiffer.
Here.
President Fannerstil.
Here.
Trustee Walsh Lager.
Here.
Connor.
Here.
Paul Quest.
Here.
If you'd all rise for the pledge of allegiance led by trustee Walsh Lager.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to step down to the podium because at this time we are going to do the swearing in of our trustees that were elected. Their term does not start until the 16th, which is next Tuesday. Adam, if you'd please, trustee Pfeiffer, if you'd please raise your right hand. I, Adam Pfeiffer.
I, Adam Pfeiffer.
Having been elected or appointed to the office of village trustee.
Having been elected or appointed to the office of village trustee.
But have not yet entered upon the duties thereof.
But have not yet entered upon the duties thereof.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of village trustee.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of village trustee.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Trustee Trutschel.
It's like the favorite day of the year.
Please raise your right hand. I, Thomas J. Trutschel.
I, Thomas J. Trutschel.
Having been elected to the office of village trustee.
Having been elected to the office of village trustee.
But have not yet entered upon the duties thereof.
But have not yet entered upon the duties thereof.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of village trustee to the best of my ability.
Of village trustee to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. The next swearing in we are going to do from the dais as there was a recent accident.
Offing prohibitive is your bike.
Please raise your right hand. I, Shontae DeBoer.
I, Shontae DeBoer.
Having been elected to the office of village trustee.
Having been elected or to the village of village trustee.
But have not yet entered upon the duties thereof.
But have not yet entered upon the duties thereof.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties. Of village trustee to the best of my ability.
Of village trustee to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Congratulations to all of our trustees that will be taking their seats or retaking their seats on the 16th. At this time, we have public comments. So anybody that would like to speak in public comments, please feel free to step towards the microphone. Do we have anyone on Zoom?
Nobody on Zoom.
All right, don't everybody get up at once to speak, but since we have no one that would like to speak in public comments, we will move to our first item on the agenda, which is a consideration of the village board minutes of the March 25th, 2024 meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the village board minutes of March 25th, 2024.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the meeting minutes for the March 25th meeting. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain.
Got them? Two abstentions, that motion still carries. Now we have items that are related to our vouchers. Consideration of vouchers for payment in the amount of $732,634.41.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers in the amount of $732,634.41.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pay the vouchers. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion carries. Now we have actions related to licenses and permits. We have an operator's license for MICA Lancaster. As is customary, I will just, chief, is there anything that you have on that you want to say on this?
Background investigation. I still approved MICA for operator license. I just wanted the board to know some of the background as it relates to that operator license. There were two OWI-related convictions. One was a first offense OWI in 2018 with a conviction in March of 2019. The other one was actually OWI-related, but for the prohibited alcohol concentration or content. It was second offense. Arrest of 12/29 of 19, conviction of 10/7 of 20. So there was just two OWI offenses. We wanted to make sure the board was aware of that. As you can see, they are several years old for arrest dates and even for both conviction dates, but wanted to make sure the board was comfortable with that.
Thank you.
And again, my recommendation was for approval as of February 19th, 2024.
Thanks, chief. We do have the person here, I believe. If you'd like to speak, you can. You do not have to. Totally up to you. It's not, okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the operator license for MICA Lancaster.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the bartender's operator's license for MICA Lancaster. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. That license will be granted. That passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now we have discussion and consideration to award a contract for the salt dome repair to Structure Works.
So in the 2024. Our budget, the DPW Public Works budgeted to repair the salt dome walls in '24. And then in '25, we put in the budget for re-roofing the salt dome. So we sent us out to multiple companies. Only got two local companies that bid on it. We had money. We budgeted $80,000 and it came in at $77,000 by Structure Works out of Brookfield. The next lowest bid was right around $100,000. And so what they have to do for the scope of the work is they literally have to, we have to remove all the salt and put it out on our parking lot. They have to have a structural engineer come in and support the roof because what they're going to do is cut through the wall and reform and rebar back in. And then what they do is put a sealer on the inside so the salt doesn't penetrate it again. The work will take approximately three weeks. Like I stated, this is coming out of the 2024 CIP budget. Staff recommends awarding the salt dome wall contract to Structure Works works to the sum of $77,000 even.
I'll make a motion that we approve the salt dome repair to Structure Works for $77,000 even.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve or award the contract for the salt dome repairs to Structure Works. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Now we have discussion and consideration of the SCIT agreements. We have, we can do this however, if we want to take them differently, but there's a lot of agencies. We have a mutual aid agreement with, for the SCIT, I'm going to call it. Is anybody, tell me if I'm pronouncing that right? Am I okay to do that? Okay. SCIT and Brookfield Fire Department, mutual aid agreement with SCIT and Lake Country Fire Department, and SCIT mutual aid agreement with nine other agencies. So I'm totally good. Those agencies being, they were just, Brookfield, Elm Grove, Muskego, New Berlin, Heartland, Sheneka, Della Field, McQuanago, and Peewaiki. I'm totally fine taking those all at once. If a board member were to want to take each line separately, that's fine as well. Chief, go ahead.
Overview of these agreements. The main thing that brought these agreements forward were the agreements with the fire departments. It's something called TEMS that we're doing with each of the fire departments. That stands for Tactical Emergency Medical Services. So these are specially trained EMS, paramedic level trained operators that go in with our SCITs, that Suburban Critical Incident Team or our SWAT team. So they would be on those calls. That doesn't replace what any local fire department and its service would be providing. These would be embedded members to provide emergency care to either a suspect that was wounded during one of those operations or a law enforcement officer or anyone for that matter that was in that immediate incident that would be wounded. They could provide that immediate care. So to do that, we had some specialty trained paramedic personnel from both Brookfield and Lake Country Fire Department. The Brookfield person, I think, also works at Lake Country Fire, so it's one of those things. So that's how those two specific agencies got involved. They're embedded in all of our training as well. So it's a big, it's a very involved training. And for any call out, they would respond out to. We've been doing it under our normal mutual aids, so we have to call, request mutual aid to them every single time. This agreement would just make that as they're basically part of our team, which they have been for the last several months. So this just codifies that. And then since we were doing those, we brought the nine agency SCIT agreement that's been existence for decades in one shape or another. And as attorneys would always have it, they get involved and they argue about a couple of words. So they just wanted to clean up some language under section five titled expenses. And basically, the intent of the SCIT was always that we were not going to bill each other agencies as we had calls for service for like salary, things like that, because what goes around comes around kind of philosophy. We're all helping each other for everyone's different calls for service and they ebb and flow. Where one year we may have the majority of them, next year we may not have many of those type of calls that we use that service. However, if something catastrophic were happening or unusual or a normal, such as an officer involved shooting, where an officer was injured, the state statute allows us to recoup those costs, similar to what happened to us with the city of Della Field. That was not an SCIT call, so it was not the same type of thing. But the agreement still says if something like that would happen, we would still look to be reimbursed for something that unusual or catastrophic. But the day-to-day, hey, we go to help Brookfield today, but then they come help us tomorrow and then we're in New Berlin the next day and we're back here the next. We're not paying for a couple hours of that operator's time to assist on that team element. So that's really was the essence of this is we're not looking for that day-to-day operational cost, but that catastrophic, unusual circumstance. We want to make sure that we still have that outlet through the state statute, which we had in place under the agreement. But as I go back to, lawyers will argue about different words and they just felt like it was time to clean it up, since we were looking at those other two agreements anyhow. And we had a couple of new police chiefs, so it's time to add their new titles and names to the agreement anyhow. So really, not a whole lot of changes with that, other than some semantics on the language. But the fire ones are brand new. That's a new agreement. We did not have that previous.
And it may be in your question to ask, so if we have that with all of these fire departments, do they have it with us so that they, I mean, is it fair both ways?
We, there's different types of response when it comes to like an active assailant type situation or SWAT type assailant situation. So let's say that the call for service was here in Heartland, like we've had several in the past couple of years. Our Heartland Fire would still be on standby. They would be the home fire EMS agency. But someone that has specialized training would be embedded with that SCIT unit, either from Brookfield or Lake Country Fire. And that's not to say Heartland won't have someone embedded in that unit at some day in time. We started with just these individuals because they had already put themselves through some of the training to get the program up and running. It was only going to be Brookfield initially, but again, because one of that personnel works for both, they kind of, he knows people and they got, they had interests and they went through the training together. So they implemented that group as a whole, as those two fire departments. So that's a little different in that they're actually with that SWAT element, doing whatever work they're doing. They're like up there where the, where Heartland Fire may be parked down the road in an ambulance on standby, waiting for the incident to conclude and for a safe environment. So they're actually in that hot zone, right there with the law enforcement officers as a quick point of contact for tactical emergency care. So a little different, little apples and oranges, but still.
Sure. I'm glad I asked then.
Every agency has their fire department still as part of those calls.
Somewhat the same as that we are, we're the main go-to for the area when it comes to extraction. Doesn't matter necessarily where it happened. They're going to bring in people that have specialized training, like we've kind of taken the lead on for those kind of situations. Okay.
I'll make a motion then that we approve the mutual aid agreement with SCIT and Brookfield Fire, the mutual aid agreement with SCIT and Lake Country Fire, and the SCIT mutual aid agreement with the United agencies as read by President Fannerstil.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the mutual aid agreement with SCIT and the departments that were stated. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Now, we have a presentation of fire strategic plan by Five Bugle Training and Consultation LLC. If I could just, go ahead and step towards the podium, Bruce. I just want to let people know this has been a work in progress, in case anybody's watching this meeting. It was coming to our attention that there's not as many people in the village that are signing up to be volunteers. The people that are on are living farther and farther away. And so we wanted to look into these things, obviously, so we can keep on providing the best service that we can and so that people aren't getting stretched so thin. But so that was the whole idea. The village board did go and meet with the fire department some time ago and that kind of initiated heading in this direction. But Bruce is here from Five Bugle, so I will allow him to do the presentation.
...in which the fire department needs to move and establishing realistic objectives and goals to achieve that vision. Examples of a vision for a fire department could include expansion of services, maybe taking on EMS for the first time or advancing from basic life support to advanced life support, maybe adding additional rescue services such as a dive team, collapsed rescue team, extrication. The development of public education opportunities would be another example. Some need to have planning for a set of managerial decisions and actions that determine long-term performance for an organization. Another vision could be identifying a fire department's organization's long-term goals and objectives, such as. and objectives, such as reducing turnout and response times, perhaps department accreditation, things like that. So, a strategic plan can encompass a wide range of topics, depending on what the individual department and the community needs. And a strategic plan is really community-driven. It's a living document, it's a work in process, and it's, it's subject to change as conditions evolve. The growth of the fire department has to be accomplished with responsibility to ensure that the core services to the community are provided, and direction is communicated to all of the stakeholders, internal and external. So, the methodology for this plan, which was completed, included the evaluation of current village and fire department statistics and trends, consideration of other county studies. We looked at the 2018 Waukesha County Fire and EMS study. We looked at regional trends. What our neighbor fire departments doing, are there mergers, contracts, grants, referendums? We determined what current operational challenges to the Heartland Fire Department are. And then, we developed options to address how the fire department can meet these challenges and move forward. Both internal and external stakeholders were interviewed, internal being members of the fire department, some of the department heads of, of the village, Public Works being one. I had a chance to talk with Chief Miskel several times. We looked at external interviews, being some of the community businesses the chief and I visited, to get their perspective on the services that are provided by the village fire department. And it helped shape the picture of the current situation, and what challenges appear to exist, as well as we got thoughts on how the fire department could improve service delivery in all of the areas of the fire department. Emergency calls, public education, public relations, working with neighborhood fire departments, and other areas. We also spoke with some of the fire departments that you do have mutual aid with, and got feedback from, from their chiefs and personnel. And I'll, I'll tell you right offhand, everything, all the opinions and perspectives of the Heartland Fire Department from the outside were very favorable. Everybody's impressed with the professionalism when they call for service, and, and the type of mutual aid that they get from the fire department. Their biggest concern is, they say, we know we're gonna get great service when we call them, the question is if they can come or not, what their availability is. So, what was discovered over, in this methodology is that, that Heartland is a growing community, okay? It's a healthy, steady growth versus a chaotic explosive growth. And this is good, because it gives you the opportunity and the time to foresee what the needs may be and to prepare for them. The village has been doing just this over the last number of years, and certainly has been my observation since I was here last in 2018. The Heartland Fire Department has increased, a increase in call volume as the community grows. It's the same type of steady growth that allows her planning. It's not an explosive call volume where they're, they're inundated and can't do anything. But it is a steady growth, which has eventually taxed their ability to respond to calls particularly when a second or a concurrent call comes in. There have been changes in worker philosophies that have impacted many fire departments' operations. Fire departments across the board, their membership is seeing a new prioritization of personal and family time, versus I'll come to work anytime, any day, work all the overtime you can give me, et cetera. You know, we're seeing, we're seeing that attitude change generationally as we go on. We're seeing increased commitments to other priorities in the fire department. So, in the volunteer world, or the paid-on call, they've got a life outside of the fire department, and we're seeing more family and community commitments that can challenge the ability of people to come in and, and respond on their time off at any given time. And the fire service is also seeing burnout, more now than ever, as fewer people are volunteering to do the work, and those that are there are required to pick up the slack as best they can and do it. And there, the current strong job market has impacted planning. As we know, recruiting and retention is an issue. We're, I don't know if it's happened down here, but up around the Oclary, I'm seeing police and fire departments buying ads on the local TV stations, saying, come and join us, come and test with us. So, that, that's unheard of. I mean, when, when I tested for the fire department, I competed against 200 other people, hoping to get a spot. Now, they're lucky, if they get 20 to 25 in some cases, to apply for a job. So, and, and we've, we've seen that in many different areas, not just the public safety and, and public service area. A number of fire departments have experienced an increased reliance on mutual aid to shore up response capabilities. And communities that rely on an existing regional supply of firefighter and medics, they rely on them to schedule and working on multiple departments to fill rosters. So, as Chief Miskel referred, you may have somebody on Waukesha and Lake Country, you may have somebody on Merton and Heartland, but they're working on multiple departments, getting hours in. And the problem is that when somebody's working on that department, they're not available to help you. And they may come under a mutual aid auspice if they're there, but if one department says, we've got 50 people, and others says, we've got 50 people, if they share 25, you really don't have that, that full number of, of people. So, it's kind of a catch-22 situation. It's nice that they can help out and get to know the other communities, but it doesn't help in terms of gross numbers of personnel that you need on an emergency scene. And emergency scenes rely very heavily on, on personnel. You can have the best equipment around, but if you don't have people to do the job, that's where the problem is. At the same time, a number of communities have sought ways to shore up their response capabilities. We've seen grants for equipment, grants, the FEMA will help you hire people and help pay them for the first three years. We've seen local referendums support hiring of additional personnel for fire departments. And there still is a competition to get people, even with those, when the money is there to do it, there's still the competition to get the people that are out there. So, the Heartland Fire Department is finding that the growth of the village and the subsequent increase in calls for service, in both the emergent and non-emergent situations, and non-emergent being community services, fire inspections, things like that, also impacts on how the department is managed, because there's so much more to manage. So, professional leadership is becoming increasingly critical. The Heartland Fire Department is experiencing the same staffing dilemmas that its neighboring fire departments have faced, which has placed the village in the position to examine and determine what you want the fire, the future of the Heartland Fire Department to hold. The challenge is that, we noted, there are basically five of them. Staffing was the number one that came up overall, okay? Having sufficient people to respond. The second was response times, which is primarily the second call for service. The initial calls, when an ambulance comes in, or a fire call comes in, there's people at the station, you know, they can get out. But it's when they have, say, a second alarm, or need additional people to come in, that, that's when a response times can suffer, or a mutual aid, which it always takes longer to have somebody come in from out of town. Recruitment and retention is a challenge, finding qualified personnel to do it. A number of departments are taking people fresh out of school with, with little or no experience, because that's all there is right now. Facilities to accommodate the growth, I don't know a fire department around that isn't saying we're getting pinched on space. And then, the fiscal resources to, to address those challenges, many communities have. So, strategic goals were developed to address those five primary challenges. The first proposed goal listed is gonna have the greatest impact on the village, and if you've had an opportunity to see the plan, you'll see that, that the first goal is staffing, on how you're going to do it. And basically, in a nutshell, this says, do we go on like we're doing? Do we try and add people piecemeal over the years as funding becomes available? What's the best way to address it, so we have consistent staffing for 24, or for consistent responses, at least during the daytime? But that first goal also brings in the consideration for transitioning from what is now a combination department of full-time employees, primarily EMS, and volunteer or part-time calls for fire, from transitioning from that model to a full-time career department where the station is staffed 24/7, by a minimum number of personnel who can staff both the fire engine and the ambulance at the full time. While this goal is gonna have the greatest fiscal impact on the village, it's also going to have the greatest positive impact on the village's ability to provide timely and effective emergency response, while also positively impacting those non-emergency type situational services, as we mentioned, like safety inspections, public service, public education, those types of things. There are five other strategic goals listed in the plan, and they will provide for improved service delivery, operational effectiveness, human resource management, community outreach, and the overall professionalism of the Heartland Fire Department. The other goals where you're evaluating your equipment, your facilities, those, the other five strategic goals are common goals that many fire departments do when they need to improve and, and shore up the, the manage, the management of the department, and having their risks under control, and having the appropriate policies, procedures, guidelines to address that. Goal number one, whether the department transitions to a full-time career department or not, will determine on how the other five strategic goals are implemented. If the transition to a full-time career fire department is determined to not be in the best interest of the village, the remaining five strategic goals can still be accomplished. They will probably be accomplished in a different manner, and, and a different timeline than if it were undertaken by full-time staff, and may face its own implementation challenges, but they could still be accomplishment, they could still be accomplished if management feels strongly enough about them to stay on top of them and do it. So, what would the action steps for the fire chief be in addressing these fire, these strategic goals? The fire chief, under either scenario, whether it's a full-time career or a combination like it is right now, would need to take each applicable strategic goal and create an action plan to accomplish it. They would do this with an internal committee, they would sit and identify the, the key implementation indicators, and they would get together and get the support and involvement of the fire, entire department to identify, identifying the areas of each goal to be worked on, and assigning personnel to lead work groups towards a strategic goal, to create action steps to achieve the strategy. Confirm key performance indicators, and scheduling work reviews and updates to ensure that they're being met. Once this is started, you gotta keep on top of it and be on schedule, and everybody has to be accountable for the role that they play in accomplishing these strategic goals. The chief will need to maintain overall situational awareness of each component of the strategic plan, to ensure that it is accomplished within the identified timeline, barring any unforeseen circumstances, and ensure the resources needed to accomplish each goal are available. It's not a small undertaking. In terms of the support that I heard when we talked about potentially transitioning to a, a full-time career department, and we spoke with both, again, the internal and the external stakeholders on this, I can state that I've, I've witnessed what I would consider to be substantial support within the community to transition to a full-time career fire department, from all of the stakeholders I spoke with. Internal stakeholders and members of the department recognize that that transition will mean the way the Heartland Fire Department has traditionally operated for the past, how many years?
Thirty.
Okay?
A lot.
It's gonna change. It's gonna be completely different. Meaning, some of the people that you even see here in the room may be working themselves out of a job, because you'll have full-time leadership to take over what right now the part-time, the dedicated part-time folks are doing. Well, others will take on a different role within a new fire department structure, probably with less responsibilities than they enjoyed previously. It's a restructuring, okay? Not to say that if you do go that route and look to hire full-time firefighters, that any of the current members of the fire department couldn't apply to, to come into a full-time position. The community businesses that were interviewed recognized the importance of quality and timely emergency services. They conveyed an overall willingness to support a full-time fire department, at the same time expressing the importance of businesses being treated fairly, if asked to support the move in, fiscally in some manner. So, they're saying, we're all for it, but please don't send us a bill for the whole thing, you know? We're part of the community, and we'll, we'll do our fair share to make sure that, that it happens. So, I really didn't run into any negativity over that perspective. Everybody says, yeah, it's great, so if you can make it happen, if you can find the people, the money, this and that, it'd be awesome to get there. Hence, hence the challenge of, of going forward. The evolution of the Heartland Fire Department part-time staffing, there, there is a place in a new fire department for those part-time staff that have faithfully served the village over the years. While I'm not recommending a specific avenue, there's some options that you can consider, and the chief could consider. You could create a battalion of part-time employees to support the full-time battalions, the staffing when needed. For example, if you have shift openings due to personal leave occurrences or injury leave, one of the part-time may be available to take that shift, instead of, in the beginning anyway, paying overtime to have another employee working that shift. Additional on-scene staffing at an incident may require, you know, more people. So, you can call for mutual aid, but you could also page in the part-time staff like they do right now to go on calls, which would beef up and help with the staffing on scene. And you would have mutual aid requirements to assist other agencies. If a large request for mutual aid came in, you have limited on-duty resources, you still have the part-timers that could respond to that call and go and assist as a Heartland Fire Department to other agencies that are looking for mutual aid. Also, could provide an opportunity for mentoring of new employees or internships through the local technical college, and you provide an opportunity for them to support staff to work shifts as extra personnel. So, if you've got the engine staffed with three and the ambulance staffed with two, if two of the part-timers want to come in and staff up, make it a heavier staff, if, say, there's a requirement that they put in 10 hours a month in order to maintain their status as a part-timer, they could come in if they wanted to and, and supplement the current staffing to the capability of, of the housing and, and the rigs. So, there's a number of different ways that they can stay involved, certainly in any fundraising that may go on, certainly in, in support of the, the department. But again, that would be a bridge to cross and see how, how they want to remain active within it, if we go down that path. Obviously, standard operational guidelines would need to be developed to manage any such opportunities, and implement it under the chief's direction and oversight. So, in summary, I see this as an exciting time for the village and the Heartland Fire Department from many perspectives. The village is growing, providing an attractive quality of life for current and prospective residents. You've got the population growth that would support a full-time department, and again, we're talking, when I say full-time, we're talking, a shift would have probably six on-duty at any given time. If one person is gone or on vacation, it could run with five. You'd have three on the ambulance, I'm sorry, three on the engine, two on the ambulance. If you had six people, you could either have four on the engine, two on the ambulance, if the ambulance- If the ambulance need a third person, the fourth one could go with the ambulance, leaving the engine available to take the second ambulance or go on a fire call. There's just all sorts of ways that you can make this work with half a dozen people on a twenty-four hour shift. People, when in a crisis, they have high expectations when they call nine-one-one. We heard this from the external stakeholders, and so far, they've been happy. And the Heartland Fire Department stakeholders have a high level of respect for the emergency services that I mentioned. Residents who desire to live in a smaller community, maybe they've had it with the big city and they wanna come to a wonderful community like Heartland, they bring with them their experience and their expectations that they had in their old, larger community, which may have had full-time emergency services available on a larger scale. Businesses rely on their community's infrastructure to sustain and grow their business and to attract new business. And there are no signs that I saw of the Village of Heartland getting smaller or reversing course. If I'm wrong, let me know, but it, it looks like it has consistently, over the last twenty, twenty-five years or more, kept on that, that onward trend. And the cost associated with any transition from a combination to a full-time department is going to increase with every year you wait. It's just, just like anything else. If you wait to buy a car next year, it's gonna cost you five thousand, five thousand dollars more than if you buy it this year. So I guess what I'm saying is you're in a position where you could truly justify doing that if you wanted to. If you decided, "We're not gonna do that, we're gonna wait," you can still improve what you have, okay, with the fire department through the other strategic goals. They also hired those additional personnel this year, three additional personnel. So you would think that that would put them right where they need to be now, 'cause three more, plus you got two on duty, or three, I'm sorry, two, two more? You only have two? Okay. So you get two and three, you got, you should have four or five people there, right, were doing it. Well, that's not the case yet, and, and the chief or deputy chief can, can speak to it if you have questions. But right now, the people they were able to hire, you have one in school. One of the new employees is filling in for a long-term absence. You know, so they're not able to come in and stoke up, you know, like they would be if the department were at full staff. And those are some of the managerial challenges you're going to run into on day-to-day. It's definitely a step in the right direction. It's better than it was before, because if they weren't there, you'd be digging even deeper on the bench to fill what you have now. But if you were to transition to a full-time career, those types of things, and the, the concerns of making sure everybody's getting their training hours in, are they gonna go here for training, are they gonna go to Merton, are they gonna go to Lake Country? Who's gonna keep track of that? You know, this, that, and the next thing. The, the hiring turnover that you have, where you're, you're certainly hiring more people through the, the current way the department is run than, than I suspect it would be under a career scenario. You're constantly training in new people, having to equip them, getting, you know, things like that. There are just a number of factors that would help reduce the cost of doing business, you know, by going career. But again, it doesn't have to happen. If you think it's, it's the right thing to do, you can certainly justify it. If, if you wanna, you know, wait a year or two, again, that's up to you, but just, just be aware of what's going on around you and how people are doing it, and perhaps what the expectations are of a department. I will say then, any department that relies on mutual aid to augment or supplement their staffing issues, that is not tenable for long-term. Because other communities are gonna see that, "Wow, we're going this place a lot" because they, they don't wanna hire, they don't wanna do things. You know, and they're gonna say, "Mutual aid is a give and take, and right now, we're giving a lot and not asking for much in return because of the differences in, in service delivery." And I can tell you from personal experience, in Eau Claire, we did that with a private ambulance service. We were supplementing twenty to twenty-five percent of their calls, and we said, "We're not gonna do that anymore." We, we took our ambulance and took over the county. And basically, the private ambulance service went away and just worked for the hospital. But that was because they were asking us to supplement their staffing situation with fire department personnel because they didn't wanna hire extra people to meet the demand for service they had. So that's basically the findings of, of the strategic plan. Each of the, each of the strategic plans have key performance indicators that you can work into an action step, and then, over the course of, have this planned out so over the course of five years, they are completed. And of course, you would step in and do periodic checks and see where they're at and see if anything needs to be changed, 'cause as we mentioned, it is a dynamic and living process. I, I wanna thank Chief Jamborets and the members of the department. They were all very cooperative. I didn't get any negativity from any of them in any of the discussions. You know, they, they see what's, what's going on and, and where it could go, and everybody, you know, supports what's best for the department and, and the village. So with that, instead of blabbering on, I'll just say, or can I answer any questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to say real quick, Bruce and I talked. I'm gonna let the boards stew on this for a month. You can ask questions or whatever. We'll have Bruce come back in May, if that's okay, to have a more intimate conversation about the future of the fire department.
The exterior stakeholders, how many approximately did you talk to? And who exactly, store managers, building owners, or who did you talk to?
Whoever we could get, whoever was there available to talk to, we always tried to go at the highest level. So, geez, you maybe helped me out when we went up to the Refuge Company.
Yeah, we talked to GFL, Dave Wall and a couple other people that were in the room with us. Sorry.
Oh, here, chief.
Either way. Yeah. So we talked to Dave Wall from GFL and a couple of the guys from there. We also talked with Waste Management, can't think of her name right now. And their manager, we talked at Medline with the, the new general manager there and his staff.
He went to the bank?
Yeah, we talked, what's that? Uh, we, yeah, we met with Aurora and then also met with Bank Five-Nine. So those were the ones, we sent it out to everybody, every business we could think of. Those are the ones that came back to us and gave us dates to come and talk to them, so.
Chief did attempt to make additional appointments, but they didn't respond to on that, so.
Also, and help me understand the, the two hires. You hired a student and can't work shifts, so explain why that person was hired. I'm just curious.
No, he works shifts, he works his shifts, but he's only, only the one. The, the idea was that we were gonna hire the two people, put them on forties to cover the times, Monday through Friday, that we're missing the second ambulance calls. Nights and weekends, we're pretty much fully staffed always, so we can get two buses out, we can get, you know, other stuff out. The, the one guy was already a paramedic, so he's filling in for the one of my full-timers that is out on a medical right now. And the other guy's in class, so he can, three days a, a week, he's in class, and then he comes in and works his forty hours, not at the times that we were looking for initially, but when he can. So he gets his forty hours in. It's just, I haven't seen, you know, and because he's in class, he'll graduate May or June, and then he'll be able to, to come into the forty hour per week, you know, during the day. So right now, he's working whatever shifts he's available between school and clinicals and all that kinda stuff, so.
Well, I'm ju, I'm just going off of your, your, what you stated here, that he cannot provide consistent staffing hours. So that, to me, that's a negative. So I'm just curious why you would hire somebody that is not going to help you. So I, it's my, I mean, just help me understand.
So we had the two spots, I had three applications, two internal that were in paramedic class, and the one guy that was already the paramedic, so. So I, you know, I talked with everybody and they said, "Yeah, you know, hire him, and as soon as we can see that, the results of that, it'll be, you know, it'll be better for us, so."
It's kinda hard, we do that with some, our police has that opportunity, hire somebody who's going to school in hopes that they go through school and you get that, that person, so it is tough. I think Western Lakes, everybody's struggled to get people, so.
Well, it, it explains it when they only had three applicants, so it makes sense.
Yeah, Pewalki has twelve openings right now. They put out, they have thirteen people that applied, and that, they haven't even done background checks or anything, so who knows where their, it's gonna go.
I'm, I'm good.
Only thing tapping off of that question is, if we did not go with the full-time, how many more firefighters would you need in the next twelve, eighteen, twenty-four months, would you say, to be able to accommodate?
So, I mean, the fact of the matter is, all of the part-time people are held to twelve hundred hours. Otherwise, they go into WRS. So unless we're gonna take a big bite of that WRS thing, which is, what, four thousand dollars a person at their twelve hundred hour mark?
Yeah, six point nine percent of, let's say they make thirty grand. So you're looking two, two grand for them, three grand for us, so.
You know, to put, to put an extra two or three part-time on during the day, that would help us. But again, they're gonna reach their twelve hundred hours, and then I may not have them anymore.
And the hard part with that, even if we decide to let them hit the twelve hundred, you can't let them hit fifteen, sixty, 'cause then they're eligible for insurance. Realistically, nobody's gonna say no to our insurance. I mean, and you can't say, "Hey, don't take care," you can't do that. That's why they have the hard caps at fifteen, sixty. You'll see that with bus drivers hiring up to twenty-nine hours a week, that type of thing.
If you hired like a couple of full-timers, then that would, how much help would that do?
So, to get really the full benefit right now, if we hired another four, that would give me three people per shift. So, again, with a, with a couple of part-time people, that's five. You know, again, we can move numbers around however you want, but there's, at some point, there's going to be, you know.
Can you explain the minimum to them? So right now, if we have two on, we run an ambulance, we can do that. We can't run an engine unless you have three.
Three, minimum, yes.
Yeah, explain how.
So, yeah, so our two staffing, you have to have,
Two on ambulance.
You have to have a paramedic and a, a, a minimum of an EMT basic to run the ambulance, okay? And that's what we staff during the day. So it has to be, they have to be an EMT basic. Hopefully, they're firefighters, so that if we do have some part-time people that can come in, they can staff an engine with the ambulance there, and then we wait for somebody else to come in to finish off that staffing, so. An engine is a minimum of three. Our MABUS agreements actually say four, but we can get away with three on an engine, so.
So right now, if, on or off, right now, if you get a fire call, those people who are full-time are firefighter, paramedic, or firefighter, EMT realistically. They take the engine, and you wait for.
We'll take, generally, we'll, it depends on who we have coming, 'cause we can, we tell by our boards. They'll take an engine and the ambulance and wait for them to get on scene with another piece of equipment. Or if we can wait a few seconds and somebody's close, they can get on the engine. We'll take both an engine and ambulance. Today, for example, we had, Pewalki had a big accident out on ninety-four. We got called to backstaff their station. Sussex had a fire at Quad Graphics. They called us for a ladder. We were on our way to Pewalki, and nobody wanted, nobody showed up. I had two people there, but I couldn't go with, that would be me and one other firefighter. We had nobody else to staff that ladder for them, so we had to call them and tell them we can't make it, so.
We also had another fire call this evening that required for a response, for a fire engine response, and we didn't have enough staffing that came down. And it ultimately turned out to, one person had to bring the ambulance, one person had to bring the fire truck, and depending on the services needed, that person on the AMBO had to abandon the AMBO on scene to go help on the fire truck, but it still wasn't a full crew yet, because we didn't have enough personnel responding. We didn't have anybody responding from home for that call. So there's days that we do have, like, an extra person around that we can staff an engine and where we, generally with three people right now, we have two ride in the truck and one bring the AMBO up and then abandon the AMBO to join the fire crew, as long as they're cross-staffed, there, as long as they're firefighter certified and at minimum EMT certified. And that's not always the case, depending on how the staffing is and how we have sign-ups throughout the week, 'cause we offer, you know, firefighter only to come in, which we generally only do on the weekends, or they come as a first responder at night. Or if they're EMT only, they can sign up for part-time shifts to supplement that AMBO response to be an ALS unit for our first-out EMS calls, so.
Yeah, as Bruce was saying before about people, we're sharing people with Lisbon and Merton. So Lisbon had a structure fire back in January, and it was just up off of Highway K. We were called for our engine in an ambulance. We weren't able to staff anything. I got up there, five people got off the Merton rig, and they were all five people that were employed by us also. So I had, both my ambulances were out at that time, and we had nobody else to staff an engine. So we, we were up there with the tender, but that was it, so.
If I could just do, just real quick follow-up, just a couple of, of responses with the chief has said. If, and, and I don't know if that engine went out on the emergency mode or not, but to take a piece of apparatus that size with only one person and then expect them to drive red lights and siren without a second set of eyes in that cab to help with that, it's not like driving a car, okay, like a, a police squad car do so. That's, that's a risky thing to do. The other thing is, you can have three people on the engine, but the National Fire Protection Association standard is that if you only have two or three people on the fire ground, you have to, you have to limit yourself to external defensive operations. They have a two-in, two-out rule that says, "Two firefighters going on a hose line, you've got two outside ready to back them up and help them if, if they need to." Now, if, if there's obviously somebody trapped, and if there's a way that they feel they can safely get in to do it, they may go and, and do their best to affect the rescue. But you're also putting your employees at significant risk by asking them to do that. That's why it's so critical to have a second apparatus with personnel on scene, whether it's an engine or an ambulance. So you can have someone at the truck, two people on the first hose line, two people on the second hose line to, to have an effective evolution there. And that's, that's not just unique to Heartland, it's, that's all over.
I'm just going around.
Yeah, right, I've, I've got a couple of questions, or really just one question. This is for Bruce, and I'm curious more of what you've seen elsewhere regarding this particular, I, I think it's an issue. The number of EMS calls we have, even compared to these other departments where you've got their pay ranges and everything else, we've got proportionally more EMS calls than fire calls, greater than these other departments. I know, because I've lived between a couple of them, our ambulance spends a lot of time at senior living facilities. Do other departments that you work with throughout the state face this issue? And what are others doing to help with that issue?
The short answer is yes. Universally, I would say that eighty percent of fire service calls are EMS now, since a lot of the fire departments have incorporated. Even communities that don't have an ambulance, like La Crosse, they, the fire department does not run EMS, they still respond to EMS calls as support. When the ambulance goes out, if, if all of the patients were a hundred and twenty pounds and lived on the first floor, life would be good. But, you know, we have multiple-story buildings and, and, and the size of a patient can, can vary, so it's not unusual to call for help. And law enforcement is oftentimes busy doing what they're doing, so they can't show. So they'll call for an engine to come with personnel to help with patient movement or carrying out equipment, things like that. What do other communities do? They, you know, i- if you're talking volunteers, they can only do what they can do with what they get. If they put out a call and no one's available, lies in the case here, they come back and say, "Sorry, we'll get you someone there as soon as you can." And they may have to wait till somebody gets there. Or, you know, if, if they feel they need to do it, you just do the best you can with what you got and you get it done. You know, and people get hurt moving and carrying and things like that, where if you had more people to help, you know, they wouldn't. I can just say, the, a number of the communities, uh, Eau Claire being one of them, they got a Fire Act, a Safer Grant, which supports the hiring of additional personnel. And Eau Claire went out to hire six more people to help with their staffing. I think they did just south in Delafield. You know, they, they had their, you know, to hire. So there, everybody's doing the same thing. They're, they're looking to see what they can do to attract people. They're, they're looking to see what they can do to attract people and get it there. And when you're in the field, you do the best with what you got and sometimes you've gotta delay your actions, which unfortunately can impact patient outcomes, um, and, and that's the way it is. Sometimes in the assisted living, um, you know, they may have to triage to see what's the more important call to go to. And then whoever you don't go to, you know, amount of, you're, hopefully you triaged it correctly, but then you got people that are upset, you know, and waiting. So, it's, it's a tough, tough situation.
Thank you.
Real quick, I just wanna comment on the Safer Grant. It is a great tool. The only issue with it is a three-year grant, so after that three years, you have to have a, a, a permanent funding for it. So if you, if you are able to get some of those grants, you just, again, if, uh, I'd hate to get to the point where you have a referendum fail, something of that nature. Cause then you're essentially terminating anybody that you got with the Safer Grants. You just have to make sure. It can be used, it's a three-year tool to try and get you to that point.
And I believe if you don't keep those people on that you hired through that, you will that money back to the feds, so, yeah.
But there are also ways around. I've known communities that kept the ones they hired through that and let the ones that weren't hired by it go. Or, or by attrition, as people, uh, retire and go out. Figures lie and liars figure.
Chief, I think you mentioned that four full-time firefighter E M Ts would be a solution.
Short-term solution, yes. Um, at, to the point where Bruce is at, you know, he's talking six on a crew plus some part-time personnel. I mean, optimum. Yeah, I, I don't see it, there's other departments in the area that went away from the part-time personnel, but now we're going back. Um, I talked to Pewaki. Um, I don't know if you know what's going on with the Lisbon thing, but they're in talks with Pewaki possibly taking over firing E M S with Lisbon. I just talked to their assistant chief, he says, how do you get people for part-time hours? I said, we have a pretty robust thing with that. And he says, well, are you advertising? I said, we stopped pretty much advertising. Everything now is word of mouth. People that are in class, hey, I work with Heartland, it's a great group of guys, you know, if you're looking, come on over, so. We lose a couple, we gain a couple. I just lost two people that resigned. I've got two applications that are probably gonna go to the P F C in May. You know, one is, one is already firefighter, E M T, the other one has no training, so. But it's just kind of a rotating door and now as they're, as they're getting up, we, we have them sign agreements with us that if we send them to class, they don't stay for three years, they owe us for the full class. Paramedic is six thousand dollars plus. We've got three people in paramedics. Chances are, they're gonna get out of paramedics and they're gonna have a job, cause they're a fire already. They're gonna have a job somewhere. If it's not here, it's gonna be somewhere else, so they're either gonna come and stay with us and work that time off, or they're gonna pass back. And we, either way, we lose them, you know, that type of thing. I had one guy just got hired for City of Walwatosa. They told him, you're on probation for a year, you can't work at another fire department. If you want, after that, yeah, go ahead, so.
Would you view as a five-year solution, ten-year solution, if you could get four full-time?
It would, it, it would probably be four or five years. I mean, depending on call volume, how that goes up, you know, and I've talked with Ryan a lot about, you know, what is the, the right number? There is no right number. I mean, we're, we're not the city of Milwaukee. We can't have fifteen stations staffed so that we get you every call. There's going to be times where we're not gonna catch that third call, or, you know, we're, we'll have both ambulances out, we may be able to staff an engine. You know, it, it, there's, it, it's just no, no one-size-fits-all type thing. If we can get it to where we can catch first two calls and then maybe have an engine staffed for anything that comes in after that, great, you know.
This is one thing that I was kinda alluding to and, and I think we'll get deeper into that conversation in a month. You know, if you're, if you're four to six, as a, as a temporary, you know, that's still four hundred to six hundred thousand dollars. Generally, I figure a hundred thousand a body with benefits, insurance, everything. So even that, you're, you're probably looking at some sort of referendum or that Safer Grant for a couple of years to see how it works. And the, oh, again, my fear is you go, you do a Safer Grant, in three years you go out for referendum and it's a no, now you you just tell those three people sorry. So, it, our growth isn't to the point where we're getting several hundred thousand dollars a year to get a job. Uh, hopefully with the sales tax increase and until we know what the, some of the state funding that they did, i- it helped us issue, it got us two bodies. I can't guarantee it's gonna get another two next year or even another one, but at some point, I think you guys will have to have the discussion on, you know, we want two on an Ambo, three on, you know, if you want two on an Ambo and three on a, on a truck, that, that's gonna look like fifteen full-timers. If you want two and four, that's gonna look like eighteen with part-time filling in. So, I think that's a conversation for, for me, just, I'm not trying to shut down the question, but just give you an idea that, I know Chief's being put on the spot. I don't know what the right is, answer is. I think you seven have to decide it for the community and the fire department to say, here, it should be X, Y, or Z and go from there.
It's fair, thank you.
Yeah.
So, are you gonna?
I'd like to add two things to a couple of those questions that are all overlapping. Um, if we do a short-term solution, we don't know, we're making a best guess how long that's gonna last. We're gonna be back here again in however many years, pick a number, whether it's three, whether it's six, we're gonna be back here again having the same discussion, hey, we need more people. That's our concern number one. Our second concern is if we're staying with the part-time model to be half of our consistent daily staffing, our challenges remain with single credentialed people, hey, he's working, but he can't be on a fire truck. That inhibits how well we can respond. And it increases our training and it increases our equipment costs, because we're outfitting and training every one of these people who might work one shift a month. So, all of those things add to our consistent daily challenges, where if we went to a full-time heavy solution, then equipment cost comes down, training cost is more consistent, as opposed to doing this, hey, we gotta put, everybody who starts, we have to put through. I did a rough estimate, I think it costs us over a thousand dollars in training just to hire a new person, give or take, not including the equipment. Based on the number of hours that D C Sharp works to train with them and the number of courses we have to put them just to be able to be single fire and single E M S. Uh, all those fees that you guys right now are just seeing in terms of our big budget, those all come down. But more importantly, it helps us standardize the product that we're delivering in terms of service delivery. So, I think we'll be back here again, I don't know when, he won't be around. So, the number, we're, we're making a best guess, but it also goes beyond that and in terms of the product that, and the service that we're delivering to the community. So, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. I know that, I know that, um, oh, yeah, no, she had said she was good. I didn't skip her, I promise. Yeah, you know, kinda what I gather, and it's something different that I'm seeing, uh, but it's something for everybody to be cognizant of. And I was gonna bring up Pewaki and Lisbon. Cause we all saw what just, and this is, I'm not throwing any shade to the West, I'm really not. But we all have seen the stuff that has gone on between the two consolidated departments to the West. The farther to the West and the closer to the West. And, a- and when you see what's happening in Lisbon and Pewaki and between those two, two departments, Pewaki isn't a consolidated department, it's Pewaki's department. And there's a community that's coming in and saying, we wanna pay you to come and do this. And we started touching on some of this, now if it's, I can tell you this, the Heartland tech thing is not gonna be subsidizing anybody. It'll be like, here's the terms, here's what you got. If you want us to service, so you have good service and your people live, awesome, we'll get on board. But that's just my thinking, that's, that's not up for vote. I do think having a full-time department opens that door. I can say there's two municipal leaders that have come to me even with the talks of whether be, if we become a full-time department of saying, I wanna jump ship, would you work with us? So it's, I'm, what I'm, my point is, is that it's something really real and now all of a sudden you're capturing back at least some of those costs or you're stopping the bleeding. And for myself, I think what, it's not, this is not an easy task. None of it is. I'm just saying, there's all kinds of unknowns. I agree, I mean, I had the number of five in my head, but if we're running five a shift, even five a shift, you still gotta have more than that. Cause you're always gonna have someone that either is, you know, someone's gonna be on maternity leave or someone's gonna be on bereavement because someone passed away, or someone's just gonna be on vacation or on a honeymoon for two weeks. And to fill that in, if you have five, eh, eh, everything's covered, alright, that's great, right out of the gate, it's awesome, cause no one can take off for a month. And then they start taking off and we're back to four, three. You know, I mean, someone can't even call in sick and say, I'm, I'm, I'm extremely ill, I am not able to come and work. So my, my point with that is, I think that, I mean, I think everybody should digest this, but I think it's just a really huge task that we have in front of us. Because we could, and I don't even wanna say it in a bad way, I've kicked the can down the road, we can keep to some extent the model we have now. Uh, or are we gonna decide now to say, okay, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna get to the, the model of a full-time department and then all that's gonna be worked on is a continuation of perfecting that and making it even better, where all of us on other municipalities might say, oh, I don't like it that this department jacked rates fifty-five percent on me, or, you know, this department, it started off as a race to the bottom, we're gonna save you money and then the head pops up three years in and is like, hey, no.
Feed me.
I, I, you know what I mean? I mean, really, you know, every, that was the talk for a while, consolidate, 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 cheaper, cheaper, cheaper. I mean, you can, I mean, I can run credit card, credit card, credit card, credit card, but the day is gonna come where the bill hits the mailbox. And the first one's not so bad, but they get bad after a little while. So, I think it's a lot for us to really chew on, cause there's so, it's all the unknowns. We don't know. What we do know is that right now, the department is in a struggle at least from seven to five, A M to P M, seven to five. And we don't have those answers, but I, I do agree with Ryan that everyone should kinda think on it and spend a month thinking about it, even if it means calling chief, even if it means calling Bruce and asking questions, or other people in the department and asking questions. But it's something for us to really think about, cause we can, we can keep on going the same way. And I'm not saying that that's bad, I mean, we have great personnel. If we do hit that point where we start getting points where like, yeah, I mean, if we start hitting a point where we're really having trouble getting people on, that would be terrible. And at the same time, I don't wanna see us waste money and jump the gun when we don't need to. It's seeming somewhat like it might be time for us to be, we are the people that are gonna prepare for the future of what Heartland's gonna be as it moves on towards twelve, fifteen, or twenty thousand people. As we just talked about having a development that's coming forward, that's assisted living and is a nursing home, basically. You know, it's full care all the way through, you can move in there at sixty and you're just fine, but as you get older and, eh, I mean, that's, we've, we just touched on, that's going, that's going to have an effect.
I would say.
I don't see sustaining things in Heartland without the continued growth.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Um, I would say you're, you are on the cusp, okay, and nearly ten thousand in the village. Uh, with the type of businesses you have throughout the village, uh, with the growth of the, the population.
But we also have the contract, I mean, I'm guessing there's probably, let's say five hundred or a thousand thrown in by having the contract on the, on the south of Merton for the town.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Eighteen hundred.
Eighteen hundred, so that's an eight and eighteen hundred.
So if, if this was twenty fourteen instead of twenty twenty-four, it'd be easy to say, let's revisit this in five years, six, seven years and see what we need to do. You're on the cusp right now that, it's not a matter of if, i- in my opinion, it's not a matter of if the village is gonna have a full-time fire department. It's a question of when, because you're getting up to the point where it's gonna trip and you, you're gonna be forced into it unless you tell the village to stop growing. And, uh, you're, you're not tripping into a, a big humongous department, you're, you're tripping into one station with a fully-staffed engine and ambulance. But as Jeff said, it also opens the doors, so. The same term kicking the can down the road came to my mind just, just the same time you said it. Is you can do that and you may have a little time to buy and you may say, wow, that was the best thing we did, it worked out better. Or you may say, why did we wait three or four, five years? If we'd have done it then, this would have happened. So, it is, it's a big decision and it's a lot to consider and I, I think chewing on it for a month is a great idea.
I don't have the answer and I don't, I don't think people will always, if we go this route, I'm not even, I mean, I'm, I, I'm not saying we are, that's for us to decide in time. I think everybody needs to chew on this. Uh, I do know right now, there's certain, there's so, but sometimes people say referendum is a bad thing and I just hope that people remember, in our case, it's very different. We're not necessarily saying, we're, we're saying ref, if we were to go to referendum, it'd be because we're doing something new to continue pri- providing a service, because a model that worked for a hundred and thirty-five years isn't working, but we didn't come here in a horse either. That worked a hundred and thirty-five years ago, yeah, sorry. But it worked a hundred and thirty-five years ago.
Jeff, I have a comment on something you said.
Yeah.
Um, I think one of the most important things, especially with word referendum, we've got to find a way to bring the citizens into this. I'm saying tonight, tomorrow, not wait until we meet in a month and then take another couple of months, whatever. I don't know how we do, I know when we did our comp plan, we had problems getting people to come to meetings and talk. But if we don't bring them in, we're gonna have an issue.
Oh, and I was, there's a reporter sitting right over there that's here, because we wanna make sure it gets out to the public.
But we, we, but, but not, I, I've got people that call me, they'd say, well, we don't get the Freeman. I said, well, if you wanna know what's going on, get the Freeman, but, um, I, we need.
We're gonna try, that's one of the things you'll hear is that, I mean, we're gonna have a lot of listening sessions. Now, we can't, we're probably not gonna go door-to-door talking, but we're gonna open up as much as we, or I suggest, we open up as much as possible inside of here, so that people can hear this, but I would in no way just all of a sudden just talk.
Cause I can tell you, if all of us vote yes and the citizens vote no, none of us will be here in two years, so.
Hold on, I wasn't done talking earlier, none of us would ever do that. If we voted yes for referendum, that means we go to the citizens and ask. And if the citizens say no, we're not at a point, we don't feel compelled to go to a full-time, we'll deal with that situation. I mean, we are, and I do agree with you, we're representatives of the people, we're at more so as saying, hey, this is where we're seeing, this is where we think we need to go. So we're asking the citizens to weigh in, cause it, ultimately, it's their, so I agree with you one hundred percent, but I'm not gonna vote yes if the citizens.
I mean, I've learned quite a bit tonight from what they've said, things I didn't even think of that are just there. You don't think of how it actually works with people in the am, you know, I call in, why can't you come out? You've got two ambulances, why can't you come to my house? They don't think of that stuff and I think that conversations need to be held with you guys too.
I mean, one, this is just a thought, but like going off of what you said. One of the thoughts I had is, I mean, we haven't done it in Heartland, we do the pancake breakfast, but why for a whole weekend, even if we get volunteers to help, can't we have a fireman's picnic where from nine o'clock until four o'clock, people are there making food? And I'm not saying just the people in the fire department, I'm saying getting the people to help and volunteer, but so people can come through, but then the fire department is there and they can give tours. And they can show the bottlenecks like have been presented to us and people can be talked to, but then it's in the times when most people are off of work, but those are ideas for making it possible, but I absolutely hope to, I, I do, I do agree with you a hundred percent, the public has to be in the know. And we can't legally just vote to do that anyways.
I know, I know, I'm just, yeah.
I don't have anything else, I think the, the strategic plan does, uh, I, I do believe it's achieving what it is. I think a long time ago when fire came and we started talking about these issues, I hope that it's at least coming across and we do take them seriously. I think all of us want, I mean, we do stuff by voting and you do stuff by hands-on saving lives, but we all want lives to be saved and to, to mitigate the risk as much as possible, that does come with cost. Uh, but, uh, uh, I, I think that this village is up to it and will, will do our best to educate the public and be there for questions and, um, but I, I still think it's a good idea for the board to be able to ask some questions just so that they're really familiar with it, before we get going with public hearings and things like that.
You just won't be able to reach me from the twelfth to the twentieth.
That's okay, we'll have multiples.
Floating in the eastern Caribbean somewhere, don't know what phone services.
We, we will make sure you are present, we will do the last meeting in May if that's possible.
Call them all day long.
Thank you very much, Bruce, for, for, for the work that you did. I think the village made a very good choice in deciding to do the strategic plan. Obviously, we're not quite done yet, cause we'll need you back one more time, but thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Bruce.
Uh, yeah, we will, uh, move to announcements. I was looking at my agenda, I can't see it, but that's okay. The, uh, yeah, we're on announcements, correct? I think, there's none, there's nothing left, so, uh, announcements.
We had that dedication mass at Saint Charles this past weekend, that went well. Uh, we had some Heartland police officers there for security and traffic purposes, cause we weren't sure what, um, it was gonna look like as far as attendance. They had a lot of R S V Ps, everything went, uh, very well. Um, Saint Charles did pay for that security, like they do for the Fall Fest, so if anyone asks about that, that was reimbursed by the church. And then village manager Bailey did receive some, uh, email complaints regarding the bells. I guess they're supposed to be set from seven A M to six P M, but they had maybe a programming issue of some sort. So they were going off all night, uh, overnight, it sounds like. So, um, we've been assured that they have fixed the issue, their program is gonna come out, um, to make sure it's a permanent fix. Um, so if you do receive any complaints, uh, we are aware of it and Saint Char, we have hence. Um, so if you do receive any complaints, uh, we are aware of it and St. Char, we have hence made St. Charles aware of it. And they have, uh, hopefully rectified the issue.
Uh, not too much extra, um, we, it, the past couple of days have been pretty busy for us. Um, we had those multiple calls today. Um, yesterday, I think you wa, ran seven calls again, all after six o'clock at night, so. What's that?
I think there was fourteen since Friday.
Yeah, there are fourteen since Friday.
Uh, Public Works will be emptying Bristol Cone Water Tower for paint maintenance on the inside starting on Friday. The work will, uh, start Monday on the interior. We did send out letters to all the community, all the subdivisions, uh, Bristol Cone, Mary Hill, Overlook, uh, Windrush, Four Winds. They're all aware of the water, uh, service will be, uh, disturbed a little bit. Uh, we did ask that they do not turn on their sprinkler systems as of yet. Um, that's why we scheduled this work this early, because we're thinking that the majority will not have their sprinkler systems, uh, activated yet. Thank you.
Um, additionally, at the DPW, we just hired Lance Weber. Uh, he's coming from the private construction industry field, so we are very hap- happy to have him come aboard. Um, next week, Monday is also brush pickup, so a lot of residents have brush out, uh, by the curb. We will come around once, uh, starting Monday, so get your brush out to the curb and we'll make one pass through the village. Thanks.
Good. No. Let's go. Alright. I was at the mass for St. Charles, I have to say, after the work that went into that and the time that the church spent doing that. It is, I personally, I know some people do not like this, but I personally think it's one of the, uh, it, it's a beautiful sight to see in Heartland. I think Heartland, there, no one can drive on sixteen without knowing we're there. I heard the bells when I walked out, I didn't realize they were going off at six fifty-five. I'm glad that they got it fixed, but it is actually a beautiful sound. I remember growing up, hearing the bells go off each hour, you can actually hear the gongs that'll let you know exactly what time it is. I think it's a beautiful thing, I think that, uh, to see such a, uh, an area that's going to be filled with so many people worshiping God, I think that's always a good thing, I think we need more of that in this world. Uh, but I, I think it was a really beautiful thing. I did want to touch on just giving, um, an announcement that people can go to, um, there's a lot of people that don't know yet. Sometimes you'll see postcards and stuff like that coming out, but, uh, we are, we're not going to be in a new district, but our district changed for, when it comes to our Wisconsin State Assembly and Wisconsin State Senate. People can go to maps dot L E G I S dot Wisconsin dot gov and you can actually click in there and it will show you what the map looks like now and what the new map looks like, just to sort of, trying to take away confusion, but just letting people know, it is an actually really easy way to go and, you know, check out the map so you can see what changed. Um, yeah, no, no, I got nothing else.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn this meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this meeting's adjourned. I'll come back to sign those.